Deputy Mayor, councillor Graham Sinclair. And we have councillor Peter Spears, the Shire's honker-serving former mayor. We have councillor Graham Cox, the former mayor and councillor Nigel Judd, the director of finance administration, Mr Stephen Firth. And over on this side, to my left, we have the general manager, Mr Gary Lavelle. We have councillor Dennis Slade, councillor Kenny Smith, councillor Max Oliver. Then we have our director of engineering services, Mr Neil Ogleby. And then, last but certainly not least, the director of environmental services, Mr Chris Dutton. So they are the council team. We have a politics, ladies and gentlemen, from the federal member for Riverina, the honourable Michael McCormack. The New South Wales Member for Curramundra, the honourable Katrina Hoskinson. The New South Wales Education Minister and our former local member, the honourable Adrian Pickley. Councillor Rachel Sleeves and the mayor of Gangaai Shire... This is the mayor. Councillor Michael Alasker, apologies. And not to mention the many, many, many other local citizens and former mayors and councillors and so on. It's just been fantastic. Ladies and gentlemen, we also extend a special welcome to some very dear friends of Tamora Shire. We have the mayor of Cooliman Shire, head councillor John Seabor, his deputy mayor councillor Bruce Hudson, councillor Cathy Maslin. And it's great also to have the team from Blen Shire, the mayor councillor Neil McCain, the deputy mayor councillor Liz McGlenn, Mr Ray Smith and his good wife, Mrs Smith. And we have also a great mate, the leader of the Tumber Trekk excursion that we go on every year, the mayor of Tumbarumma Shire has made the effort to be here, and a great friend of ours councillor Ewan Chaffey. So a particular welcome to all of you that have made the effort to be here from other Shires. We've just had arrive the deputy mayor of Dunhuang Shire, councillor Pam Hallybury. A very warm welcome. Friends, our member for Curramundra, the honourable Katrina Hoskinson. Parliament is sitting both in the federal sphere and the state government this week. So she's obviously unable to be here, but she has asked me to pass on a special message to read to you all here this evening. Thank you to the mayor for extending my apologies for tonight's meeting. And I'm in power this week attending to legislation. I've received letters and calls from many of you, and for this I thank you. I've passed on your strong feedback to the Minister for Labor and Government, the honourable Paul Toole, and to the deputy premier and the leader of the New South Wales Nationals, the honourable Troy Grant. Let me take this opportunity to reiterate that I will support all councils in my electorate of Curramundra that have proven themselves economically viable and sustainable in their respective bids for their Fit for the Future proposals, including Tamora Shire, should this be the wish of the community. I do not wish to sway the debate, but ask you to carefully consider both sides of the ledger and make a truly informed decision about the future for local government representation in Tamora Shire. I have discussed Fit for the Future reform proposals with representatives of all 11 of the councils in my electorate and have organised meetings with council representatives and the ministers for Labor and Government. To date, your mayor, Rick Furman, and general manager Gary Lavelle have kindly attended three official meetings that I have personally arranged with the minister to discuss Tamora Shire's submission on Fit for the Future. By and large, most councils have said that they have valued the journey that the reform process has taken them on, as it has made them more efficient, reconsidering and amending many of the practices that had not previously been of benefit to the rate payer. I want to thank each and every one of you who has written, emailed, faxed, telephoned, and called into the electorate office to let me know of your strong views about the IPART report, Fit for the Future, and your views on the future of Tamora Shire council. I too share your admiration for the beautiful Tamora Shire. And it is a wonderful part of New South Wales and a terrific place to live, work, and raise a family. And I didn't tell her to write that either, my bad. I've been impressed by the level of passion and pride the Shire has shown. The resonance in their letters too big, and agreed with the settlement that Tamora Shire is known as the friendly shire. Best wishes for a successful meeting. So that is a message that I believe our member means most sincerely. And I must say, we have been encouraged by her phone calls in recent days indicating her strong support of whatever it is that you, the citizens of Tamora Shire, determine is our future. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we also received late this afternoon a letter from the Minister for Labor and Government, the honourable Paul Toole. Now, I don't propose to read that letter now, however, if anyone suffers from insomnia, you are welcome to put your name on a list, and we'd be very happy to furnish that letter to you. And I mean that very respectfully too, the minister, if he happens to be here. Ladies and gentlemen, we all know why we're here, and I must say, it is very, very special to look out on you all. Essentially, the IPART report, the final report that was delivered, selling three weeks ago. How could it be? And the general manager and I represented the Shire, and actually councillor Spears was there for Golden Fields, and other friends and colleagues were there as well. When the news was given to us that Tamora Shire was not deemed fit for the future in the eyes of IPART, to say that that was a devastating, disappointing, sickening would be an understatement. And I'll never forget the look on the general manager's face. I know we can't help it, but...
Well, not that much on yours either.
I'll leave that blood in me. No, I mean it, friends, that to see a great friend and your general manager very, very sickened and shattered, it's not easy. However, however, there was hope. There was hope. And we were given 30 days, 30 days until the 18th of November to prove to the government why IPART report should be either adopted, considered, or treated with the contempt that we believe it deserves. Particularly, friends, when we ticked every seven box that was required. We ticked that, and we were very, very proud of that. And in particular, to finish, in the top 13 out of 152 councils in New South Wales, as the most financially sustaining in this great state, that alone should stand and speak for itself. We must thank our member for Curramundra, Katrina Hoskinson. She certainly knew that we were very, very displeased. And to her credit, within six days, she organised a meeting for us to be with the minister for Labor and Government, the honourable Paul Toole. And I must say, this is the fourth occasion that we did meet with Mr Toole. And after we were able to reject this ridiculous nation that we were unfit because of we're under 10,000 people that come out of left field, I might add, and the minister even acknowledged that fact, that he didn't know where that 10,000 come from, and IPART went out of their respective terms of reference in that space. But after we shared that, and the general manager did an outstanding job. And I was also very, very grateful to have councillor Spears, who was down there on other business to do with Golden Fields Water. But I asked him to come along, because I felt a man that's given 20-plus years as the mayor of this shire, I believe would carry some weight with the minister and his advisers. So I'm very proud of that delegation. After the half-hour meeting, and it was a good half-hour, the minister, I asked the minister actually, what can I tell my council and my community? And he said, "You tell them two things. The first, keep doing the great things that Tamora Shire are doing. Tamora Shire punches above its weight." Quote. Secondly, make sure you continue to represent the views of your community. So that is why, ladies and gentlemen, you do not realise the influence that you have. And I mean that very sincerely. It is you that will determine ultimately what happens to Tamora Shire. So after that meeting, we thought that was the best that we could have had for. The councillors and directors and the general manager and I attended a workshop, and everything was on the table, including the financial incentives and so on that the general manager will go through with you very, very shortly. All of that was discussed. And I have to say, it was a great debate. I'm sure all my colleagues would agree. And everything has to be on the table, of course it does. And I'm very proud of the team that discussed and deliberated. But ultimately, at the end, the decision was unanimously that we continue to stand alone as one of the strongest councils there is in New South Wales. So essentially, that is the view that we're bringing here to you. If we felt that there was any benefits whatsoever in amalgamation, we would have considered this years ago. So essentially, friends, we do warmly thank minister Toole for his time. He has been very generous to us, and we are very grateful. It doesn't mean that we have agreed necessarily with all that he has said. However, we do strongly believe that we need to strengthen the sector of Labor and Government, that we love and that we cherish. Because ultimately, the only reason that we are here and all of the staff associated with Tamora Shire are here to provide the best services and facilities for you and the other members of this community that we love so very much. And that's as simple as that. So ladies and gentlemen, this is why we also have to thank our member for Curramundra. She has been, in particularly in recent days, very, very strong supporters of this shire. Very, very strong supporters of what this community will ultimately determine is our way forward. And we are also proud of our association with REBR, the Riverina Eastern Regional Organisations of Councils. And I alluded to some of our fellow members that are here today, and apologies from the others that can't be. But we are very proud to be part of that brilliant group. We're proud to be part of the Pilot Riverina JO, a joint organisation. And during this process, which has been very, very interesting, with the amount of workshops and meetings that all of us up here have had, and our staff have assisted us with the information we needed. This has been rough. We've identified areas that we do exceedingly well. We've identified areas that we perhaps don't do so well. And we're putting measures in to ensure that they be fixed and corrected. But we have identified over 54 resource sharing partnerships with other councils, particularly throughout the Riverina, plus the wider state. And that is something that we are very, very proud of. And I must say, the minister Toole, that he fell off his chair when we told him how we resource share and we do it very, very well. So essentially, friends, you do need to be aware that Tamora Shire council is essentially debt-free. The only debt that we have is the remaining balance of that fantastic medical complex facility that everyone seems to utilise and enjoy. And we seem to be, at the moment anyway, we have doctors of pity. And that was the ultimate aim of council, is to ensure we have a magnificent, modern, up-to-date facility and in turn attract these doctors that our community needs and our growing community needs. So ladies and gentlemen, we will be debt-free, debt-free in three years. I won't say that too quickly. And then, once again, we resume our debt-free status. So that's something, again, that we're very, very, very pleased about. Ladies and gentlemen, we have been asked with our Plan B option. And council essentially know, with both our collectively parties and our heads, that the position that we are bringing to this meeting for you to consider, to stand alone, is the right one for you. It is the right one for you. And we have enough faith at the moment, at the moment, we have enough faith in the New South Wales Coalition Government that they will look at the overwhelming economic evidence and that they will demonstrate common sense... I did say it with a straight face. In differentiating between the city and the rural councils and accept the view of our community. So that is a message that I believe is true. So ladies and gentlemen, after tonight's meeting, we're going to have a special meeting of councils, eight o'clock, and we're going to consider the views and the comments and the ultimate resolution, if there is one from this community. So we will consider that, so please don't think that it's a fait accompli. Yes, our position is unanimous, and yes, it is strong. However, you are the people that we are representing, and it is your wish, after you are fully informed, that obviously we will consider very, very carefully. So, ladies and gentlemen, with those few words, I will now call on the general manager to give his presentation on the journey so far. So a warm welcome to the general manager.
Thanks, Mayor Rick, and I will be brief, actually. And before I go on, thank you so much for everyone turning up. We really appreciate it. Certainly as a staff member, and I'm sure the staff members here appreciate the fact that you've turned up tonight. I will be brief, as I said, I have to be, because the running sheet said, "The mayor, welcome five minutes." So we're a hard now behind at this time, and it's not even an election year. So, the journey so far, it all started back in August 2011, when the state government, the minister at the time, Minister Page, summon, I think is the right term, all the mayors and general managers from every council in the state to Dubbo, to an event called Destination 2036. And basically, that event came about because of, well, the local government brought it on ourselves, to be honest. We recognised as an industry there were problems. And in some parts of the state, it's more than problems, they're in a parlous state. So, we turned up at Dubbo, there was a lot of frank discussion over two days. And at the end of it, there was an action plan established. And the action plan, from the action plan in 2012, the Independent Local Government Review Panel was appointed. That review panel contained three people, two ex-general managers, one from the city councils called Jude Munro, one from country councils called Glenn English, and an academic, by the name of Professor Graham Sampson. At the same time, there was a Local Government Act Review Panel appointed, or a task force appointed. And their role was to run in parallel, to look at the enabling legislation for any changes that had to be made to enable this journey to continue. In January 2014, the Independent Local Government Review Panel report was released. Now, I'll go in and just talk a little bit about the report. They undertook a lot of research, and that research included overseas experiences, experience of in Australia. It's actually, if anyone wants to have a look at all those, and you talk about insomnia, there is a bulk of work, really. Just search for Independent Local Government Review Panel, and you'll see that there are thousands upon thousands of research papers there for people to look at. But one of the things they also did was they had T-Corp, Treasury Corporation, undertake an assessment of every council in the state. And I think it's important that we have a look at where Tamora fitted in that rating. And Tamora Shire, by the way, when I put these up, Tamora's in red, the categories we fit in. So the first thing they did was the Financial Sustainability Rating. And look, these are fairly, they're not unanimously agreed to in any means for a local government as good ratings, but nonetheless, we'll take it. And they put them on a scale from very strong to very weak. And as you can see there, there was one council in, I've stripped this back to country councils, by the way, not metropolitan. There's one council that received a strong rating, and 18 received sound, and then there were moderate, weak, and very weak. We're in the sound basis. Then they looked at the outlook, what happens into the future. And you'll see there, there was none with a positive outlook. There were 39 with a neutral outlook, which is us, and 58 with a negative outlook. At the same time, the Office of Local Government undertook an infrastructure audit. And it was on a similar scale, except they added one at the bottom called distressed. And we, very strong, there were two. There were 10 strong, which we were in it. And then there were the others that go down to distress. So as you can see, we come up pretty well in that. At the end of the time, and I know there's your friends here from Tumbarumma, they were also one of the very strong performers in that rating. But at the end of it, when you overlay all those things, and the mayor was looking to about the top 13 in the state, there were 13 councils either above us or equal to us in rating. And that is a sound long-term rating. The report had 65 recommendations. And of those 65 recommendations, I think it's pretty fair to say we agreed with probably 90% of them. Probably another 5 or 6% had no relevance to us. They dealt with Far West councils or, excuse me, metropolitan councils. So we agreed with the vast majority of that report. And for Tamora, they made recommendations for every council. And the recommendation for Tamora was a council in the Riverina JO or merge with Blen and Orkooliman. And just to explain the background to that, the report was written in such a way that if something was bolded, that meant it was a recommendation. If it wasn't, it was a suggestion. Ours wasn't bolded, so we took the option of undertaking a council in the Riverina JO. So the government in 2014 in September responded to that. And we had this new terminology, Fit for the Future. In April 2015, they appointed the Independent Pricing and Regulatory Tribune, IPART, to undertake a review of all the councils. And you can see how quickly it moved from here. On the 5th of June, the terms of reference were released. So we're talking 5th of June. And then on the 30th of June, we needed to respond. So we responded, we were told, and then 25 days later, we had to provide a response. We were given three options. One was template one, which is a merge option. Template two was a council improvement, and template three was a rural council. Now, template three wasn't available to us. We weren't considered a rural council, so we couldn't fill that form in. So we were left between either a merge or a council improvement. And council improvement was basically, how are you going to be Fit for the Future into the long term? So we undertook to do that, which we did. On 31st of July, the public were given an extra month to reply, to make submissions. In the case of Tamora, there were no submissions. On the 20th of October, as the mayor mentioned, the IPART report was released, which was a bit devastating for us. And we were given until the 18th of November 2015, next week, one week from now, to put a submission in. So the IPART report, if I can just run through that. It introduced the concept of fit and unfit, which I think really is a terrible term. But anyway, that's who we're stuck with. 71% of metropolitan councils were considered unfit, including some of the biggest, like Blacktown, Sydney City. Basically, anyone they wanted to merge was unfit. 56% of non-metro councils were unfit. There were nine smaller councils deemed fit as rural councils. There were 20 applied for rural councils. Nine were granted rural council fitness, and 11 failed on that score. And eight western area councils weren't assessed. They're going to be treated differently. And I think that's probably fair, given the fact that they've got so much road, not a lot of people, a lot of expenses, and without help, they're not going to be able to make ends meet. In our case, as the mayor mentioned, we were assessed as unfit. And the reason why we're unfit was scarlet capacity wasn't met. Now, scarlet capacity is one of these subjective things. There's nothing that can actually be, you know, a black and white answer. It's someone's judgement. And they looked at things like robust revenue base, scope to undertake new functions, ability to employ staff, knowledge, creativity and innovation, strategic planning and policy development, credibility for advocacy, resources, to cope with unexpected change, and high quality political leadership. So, but at the end of the day, the thing that we really got cocked over by was the 10,000 population. It doesn't matter what we do, we're not going to meet 10,000 population. So we had a problem with that. And no councils under 10,000 actually were assessed as fit, with the exception of the rural councils. They ignored T-Corp. T-Corp played no part whatsoever in their assessment or appeared to us and the other reports. And worse than that, I think, is that they run a series of meetings, workshops, where they advised us what was going to be included and what wasn't when they're developing their terms of reference. And during those seminars, and this is all in writing, it's on the IPART website if you want to have a look, they indicated that scarlet capacity would be met if you followed the recommendation, which we did. So we were somewhat surprised when scarlet capacity was used against us in the end. They also said the population wouldn't be a factor, but they also told us to talk in advice about that one. So what we have to do, we have to fill in a form, essentially. And it's a pretty crude form. I'll show you. You might be able to see it. Probably can. There's a box at the top, which we've got to say when we think of IPART. It does roll out a bit. You are allowed for more words in. And then there are three drop-down boxes, which are councils that you want to merge with in order, 1, 2, 3. And then there's a bottom box, which is 50 words maximum, where you can explain why you want to merge with that council. So I don't know how genuine it is when 50 words is all that's being allocated. So the mayor mentioned an offer. They did come out and they threw a heap of money at us. And let's talk about that, I guess. So what they did, they said, "There's $5 million available to cover the cost of amalgamations. If you live in Sydney, that's $10 million. But $5 million for us." There's also $5 million under a stronger community fund. Again, in Sydney, $10 million. Apparently it's more expensive to live down there. And that, again, was supposed to be used for community infrastructure. And the kicker, I suppose, is that it's only available if both councils agree to it. And the kicker, I suppose, is that it's only available if both councils agree to it, and the government agree to it by next week. After that, all the money's off the table. Now, that does seem like a heck of a lot of money. However, I would say, we have done some research on that, and using the Treasury's own figures, in Queensland, which is the most recent amalgamation, the average cost of amalgamation five years ago was $8.1 million. The Treasury's own figures in relation to the amalgamation of us was an estimate of $10.3 million. So, you know, you don't need to be a junior to realise that at the end of the day, there's not going to be a lot left, if anything. And then you've got the ongoing costs. And that includes things like, that doesn't include, by the way, buildings, or anything like that. That's talking about consultants, that's talking about harmonising everything that happens, harmonising, I suppose, is the saying, aligning things. So I guess, we look at the positives and the negatives, and the positives of a merger, obviously, the $5 million is a positive. That's per council, the merge councils, so $5 million for the merge, $5 million for the additional. There are some protection currently for employees. Under the Act, there's a three-year moratorium, if you like, protection for employees, so we can't, the new council can't lay off staff within a three-year period. The government has said that there will be less rates and more services.
We're even hoping.
It's an interesting exercise, actually, because I went on to, again, the government, they did this research, and they put it up on their website, which is really interesting to do, because it gets used against them. But in the case of Queensland, the average increase in Queensland in rates has been 4.1% above the cost of living. So in New South Wales, the average cost being, say, 2.5%, you're talking roughly 6.5% increase in rates since the amalgamations occurred. And up there, they've had four de-amalgamations. Also, Victorian Order General, they went a long time before that. For the past decade, their average rate increase across Victoria has been 6.3%. So, you know, again, I don't know where these figures come from, that they're going to be less rates and more services. And I guess, the real benefit of a merger is, or a merger proposal, is that you do have, to some extent, control of your own destiny. So if we can find a willing partner, or want to find a willing partner by next week, that's a possibility. The negatives, well, the same as the positives, actually. The cost of the merger is a real negative. As I said, the cost generally, or the experience in Victoria and Queensland has indicated that the full cost of the grant would be taken up by the cost of the merger. Loss of local representation is obviously a major issue. Again, you don't have to be a junior to realise that if you've got 10 councillors with one council, and you get 10 councils with two, you're going to have to represent that. So that's another thing. Potential loss of employment is a thing, not for three years, but at the end of three years, all bets are off. So at that stage, that can happen. The loss of direct control is a very important one, I think, and that is things like the medical centre. When you're dealing with one community, one community of interest, it's pretty simple. You know, you talk to the people, and allocate funds, and it happens. We're dealing with two communities, obviously there's two competing interests to get the same further funds. And increased rates and decreased services, and that is the exact opposite to the positives, but for good reason, because as I said, the research has shown that. And anyone who is interested in that, I do have copies of the documents from Treasury that can validate that. So the situation, or the political situation is, currently, the government still has a no-force amalgamation policy, they haven't rescinded that. And not exactly the rhetoric at the moment that says they're going to stand by, but at the moment, they still have officially an no-force amalgamation stance. The legal position is that there's three ways that they can force amalgamation, if they decide to go down that track. The first is legislative change, which would make it a lot easier, sort of slide in and that happen. That's not going to happen, because the crossbenchers, there's a whole team of the crossbenchers who won't support any legislation like that. So they're going to do it using the current Act, which is fairly cumbersome, they've got to use a process called the Boundaries Commission, which involves going back to the community, asking them for their opinion, then ignoring it, and then making a recommendation to government. But it is a fairly lengthy process, and can take, on average, probably six to eight months. The third one there is to sack all councils and appoint administrators. Now, that can happen, but even if, that only, only sort of takes the immediate barrier out of the way, they've still got to go through the process of the Boundaries Commission. So that really doesn't help them all that much. So the council position, if I can just go back to that, its stand-alone is the preferable option, and that has been council's stance from day one, and it hasn't changed, because there really hasn't been any intangible put before council that would make us change that stance. In fact, even the IPART report, I haven't got it in front of you, but it says something along the lines of, they haven't got the evidence to indicate whether there will be a benefit or not in any merger option. Now, you know, it's a bit of a legal phase to go out and suggest that we should go ahead with that, without any evidence whatsoever. And at the end of the day, you guys are the ones who will make the decision. The councillor said that, and the council's resolution at the time was that council's stance is a stand-alone, but it has to be endorsed by the residents. So that's why we're here tonight, essentially. And that's really all I have to say at the moment, so.
You did very well, Mr General Manager, you did very, very well, thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's over to you. The most important part of this meeting is your questions. And I would ask that they do, that they are questions, because obviously, I know that there's other commitments and so on this evening. I thank those organisations for either counselling, meetings, events, postponing them, and so on, it does mean a great deal. So we have the lovely Anne Rand, Captain You, with mics in hand, so if you could please introduce yourself and ask your question, and the general manager and I shall do our best to answer them. Out of here. Gary Cameron.
We have a friend calling this afternoon.
Sorry, use the microphone, please.
Gary, this afternoon, we had a friend call in, and he said, on the news, a series coming up this afternoon, BEAR has done a deal with the upper house to get this legislation through, regardless of what we decide here tonight. I reckon that Christine Hodgkinson has been appointed in those teams. She's telling us, I will support you, but you've got to look at this other ship. And, yeah, no, but again, it is, we don't look at that, you know, you look at what they're offering us, and it is a drop in the ocean of what it's going to cost us. And why does BEAR make these deals? They come over the news this afternoon to get this legislation through, when he says there's no legislation for forced amalgamations. Can you tell me, over the moment, you can't, Rick, you can? I thought we might have had a member of parliament here, we might have had a member of parliament here who can answer it.
Thank you, Gary, for the question. Look, essentially, yes, we're aware that the government want less councils, we are aware of it. There's 152. The feeling that we're all receiving is the fact that they want less councils. However, we are not, at this stage, as a council, we are not going to give up on that view at all, regardless of the news that you've just shared, which is, I think, news to most of us, about that news flash. But again, the media sometimes like to create mischief, but we will follow that up with our member, who I must say, and I said earlier, has been supportive of council to date. But again, she's got to give a balanced overview, as we have, about what is on the table. And not an easy, not an easy position for her to be in, but she is under no illusions by how Tamora Shire feels with the letters and correspondence fan calls that she's received, that have all been delivered, she said, and praise all of you, for the dignified, passionate, measured way that you've delivered. You haven't just copied other letters, you've written them from your hearts, from your minds, and that has gone down exceedingly well. So thank you, Gary. Now.
Mr Mayor, Errol Muskison, your partner.
Thank you, Errol.
It's all very well, that the powers are waiting up at the seaside, looking at these figures and computers, and in practical terms, as the council invited these people, the IPART people, out here to have a good look for themselves, and look at the distances that staff have got to travel, would have to travel if an amalgamation, and the councillors also to travel from one end to the other, and it does, very enough question, the practical terms, come and have a look.
Thanks, Errol, that is a great question. I must say that we, and I'm sure many of our neighbouring councils and others across the state, have also mentioned as part of their submission, to the three panel members come out. The general manager and I, and I think Greg De Finance, when we were in a meeting with them in Wogga, personally went to Dr Colery, and indicated, suggested he had an open, a very warm invitation for him and his colleagues to come out to Tamora Shire, and they would be treated with hospitality, but further, that they would be, have a little bit more background than just reading pieces of paper. It's about getting a feel for the council, for the staff, and for the community, and what this community has done, as the minister has said, that we punch well above our weight. So we've said that loud and clear to IPART and everyone else that will listen. So thanks, Errol. Mr Mayor, Bruce Robinson. Thanks, Bruce. After you, to the right of my line. You can't hear the press, can we? Get the other microphone, please. Can you hear me now, Rick?
Thanks, Bruce. Mr Mayor, Bruce Robinson, I've lived in this Shire all my life, as did my parents, and we've always been blessed with a very, very sound council. This town, I think, most people here, or everybody here would agree, is a very, very livable place. We've had wonderful improvements done over the last few years. We've got a passionate council, excellent staff, and why do we want to change it? I fear that if we're forced into amalgamation with another Shire in the area possibly weaker than us, we'll be dragged down to the lowest common denominator, and it'll take the heart and soul out of place. We've only got to look around at the improvements over the last 10 years in this town, and it's phenomenal. But as far as question goes, Mr Mayor, I'd like to ask, I think, the general manager, I think you had an independent report commissioned on the results, you know, of what an amalgamation would mean, could you give us a few more details on that?
Thanks, Bruce, general manager.
Yes, I can, thanks, Bruce. We had four councils, ourselves, Gundagai, Juney, and Coolaman, had an independent assessment done by an academic from UNE, a fellow named Joseph Drew. And he indicated, actually, what he said in his report, I won't just hold on. He said that, he uses academic terms, but data envelopment analysis, which apparently takes into account the scale issues. He said, suggests that Tamora is incredibly close to optimal scale in its current configuration. Therefore, merger would be ill-advised in its current, in the current scale, and almost certainly reduce efficiency owing to the overscale entity being formed. We also undertook a number of other, this in-house, we undertook a number of financial analyses, just with Coolaman and Blan, because they were the two that were suggested. And in both instances, there was no improvement, in fact, a detriment. I've no doubt that the exact same thing happened if they did the same analysis. You know, in the case of Blan, we went to Blan's public meeting last night. We're 2,800 square kilometres, I think Blan was 8,800, and we worked out that from here to Norravon was 195Ks. You know, they're big distances, you know, it's almost impossible, you know, to be efficient when you've got distances like that to travel.
Thanks, Bruce. Now, we have a question.
Margaret Slade.
Margaret Slade, no.
If we were to say, for example, that we would merge with X council, is there any guarantee that that is the one that they would let you merge with? Or would they just say, no, you're having to merge, you can merge with Y?
Well, no. Thank you, thank you for the question, but now, there's certainly no guarantee whatsoever. We certainly can give a preference, but if that council doesn't wish to stand alone, sorry, if it does wish to stand alone, then the deal's off. So essentially, yes, there's certainly no, certainly no.
If I go ahead and add to, also, it says, in order to get the money, if you like, that's basically, that's the only benefit, is that you need to have both councils agree, and the overriding thing in that is, the government has to agree. So even though you may agree, two councils may agree, the government might agree with that, so you, yes, there's no guarantee whatsoever.
An interesting point, we alluded to the fact with the Blan Shire public meeting last night, and it was a great attendance, but also, we went to Juney's last week, that was an amazing attendance in their refurbished theatre. And of course, their view, as is Blan's reaffirmed view, that they wish to stand alone, and that's been endorsed by their respective communities. Gundagai Shire had theirs last night as well, I spoke to the mayor, and he also indicated, very proud, that they have indicated that they will stand shoulder to shoulder as a council and the community, and present their case that they too wish to stand alone. So I don't know when Tumbarumba's.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, as is Coolaman Shire's next Monday as well. So all the best to you, and we'll be actually at Coolman's, Mayor Cheffy, sorry about that.
Keep that in mind.
Our next question. Pete Capwatt.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. First of all, just picking up on Katrina's letter to us here this evening, she asked us to, on a balance, consider both sides of the ledger. That's all well and fine, they can change the ledger. We've been here before with these public meetings, and you've got clear direction from us as to where we want you to go. And I think you'll get the same thing here tonight. So when they change the book again, and we've got to look at it under some other different criteria, we'll come back again, hey, then we won't put the glove on.
The only reason, because we didn't put live refreshment, we wanted to keep within that top 13 of the state. Also, like I say, look, I feel we're blessed to have the quality of people who are examining these things that have been thrown at us on our behalf. You look at the quality of the people at the front of you that are in there batting for us, I mean, I don't know you, I've run at a big firm, but these blokes, they know how to get through this government crap, and we come up with good balanced arguments against, or on our behalf, and I want to thank you for that. So this is a question, obviously you do a lot of work, and I just wonder, under an amalgamation proposal, and I'm just wondering what sort of services you might see actually change for us? What general services do you see changing? What general services do you see changing?
It's an interesting question, and it's, it's, actually, I'll hark back to Dr Drew. He actually addressed that issue. And what he said, and it does make sense, is that he took, I mentioned earlier harmonisation, it talks about harmonising rates and harmonising service or whatever. The example would be, council A has a garbage service once a week. Council B has a garbage service once a fortnight. When they combine, how long do you think it'll be before council B complains about council A getting a service once a week? So, there's only two possible options for that. They can both go back to a fortnightly service, or you can double the cost of the first council. So, this harmonisation issue, obviously, it's a decision that's got to be made by the merged council. But at the end of the day, the services have got to be the same across the whole region. And that can, there's going to be winners and losers. Some services will be less, but if you've got a poor service, the service will improve. But I'd like to think we've got good services. So, you know, I would imagine, generally speaking, you either have higher costs or lesser service.
Did everybody thank you?
Here we are.
Okay, hang on, what about, oh, the former councillor Fred Mill. You may speak.
Hello. Well, actually, I've got about three questions to ask you.
You may ask one.
And you might, I might have to take your place. So, anyway, first one, I believe, our great member. I like her, but even though I'm in the other corner. But by the same token, it has been said that she's all in favour of no amalgamations, but she won't cross the floor. Does that make her hypocrite? Or is she looking after her backside? And the other one. The other one is, the five million other people will put him in jail for those others, isn't that a bribe?
Thank you, councillor Mill, your neighbours in your seat. Governor, I've had two other questions, and I thank you for that. In relation to the suggestion that the finances were anything other than inducements, that perhaps may not be fair. But yes, some have interpreted that those characters have been dangled to what you referred. At the end of the day, that's for the individual to determine and assess what it is. Now, in relation to your issue about Katrina crossing the floor, I just remember what she's indicated. Now, that is that she will support councils and communities if they wish to stand alone that are financially vulnerable. And Tamora Shire fits in that category, so we have her support. And I must say, I've been talking with her and the general manager, you know, several times over the last week. So, in relation to the crossing of the floor issue, I asked that to her as well. And she did indicate that she wouldn't, and I asked why. And she honestly said the reason that I won't cross the floor at this stage, she qualified it, that it would potentially could affect, you know, my electorate and salary. And she said it happened to others. So, that was an honest response that she gave. Now, whether, you know, we choose to believe that or not, that's again up to the individual. However, I admire her for nothing else other than being honest. She could have told us, you know, that she wouldn't and so on. But that's a matter for her. But at the moment, the government, we are, our future's in their hands effectively. So, we need our member's support, which she has given to us and qualified. And the government will determine our fate by Christmas, one way or another. So, thanks, Fred, and grateful to have you. As I said earlier. I didn't have, I don't have a question, but I want to express a grateful speech to Rick, to you and your team. I think you've done a fantastic job, and obviously, I have to. Thank you, Kate. But I must say, we've still been letting off, as a council, been living off the last public meeting we had back in February last year, when we had the hall filled. And we keep reflecting on that, and that keeps us going, I can tell you. So, thanks so much, Keith. Robin Waddley.
Mr Mayor, may I please ask the public a question?
You may.
Okay, so, as the mayor said earlier, and as Gary said earlier, that it's up to us to decide whether we want to stand alone or emerge with another council. So, for this wonderful group of people here who work so hard, I'd like to see a show of hands of everybody that wants to support to stand alone with the Shire council. I rest my case.
Thank you, Robin. Actually, just on that note, ladies and gentlemen, we've actually received a community motion, which has been a great deal to us. And from two well-known businessmen, very highly regarded, Peter Heinrich and Debbie Davids. They have a four-point motion here that they've dropped into us. And I'll read it if Peter and Deb will allow me, then I'll ask him formally move in second for the community's consideration. Number one, that the Tamora Shire community firmly believe in the retention of Tamora Shire council in its present form. The community call on the New South Wales government to honour its previous commitment and not force our council to merge with another. Number two, that the role Tamora Shire council plays is vital to our community. The community highly values the role council plays in facilitating community pride and spirit, advocating for our community, and providing over 100 jobs to the local area. And that is an important point, ladies and gentlemen. There are 100 people that are part of the Tamora Shire family and that their families and themselves rely on this council to continue. Number three, the community has outstanding sporting facilities, parks and gardens, transport infrastructure, community and medical facilities. These have been made possible through the close relationship of the council and community and the innovation and initiative of the council. We believe a merge will place these facilities and services and the development of future facilities in severe jeopardy. And lastly, they have put this, that Tamora Shire council continues to work beside the New South Wales government, REROC, and the potential joint organisation to ensure that government reforms continues creating efficiencies for the Tamora Shire community. That motion has been moved by Peter Heinrich. You happy to move that way, Peter? Thank you. Yes, you may. Second it, Deb. Where's Deb's? Thank you, Deb. Thank you, discussing, Peter.
Now, for those who don't know, Peter Heinrich, I'd just like to say that we had some words up on the screen there a while ago, council fit. That's what it's all about tonight. We're not here to talk about what the politicians are doing. We need endorsement of our council to convince them that we as a community, and it's been shown by a show of hands that we agree, but to support our council. Now, just to give you a bit of an idea of councils, I had the privilege of being a chairman of a development board in the 90s for 10 years. And there was 12 councils on that, and I observed those, and we helped with regional development. Tamora council in those days stood out as it does today. And I say that with all sincerity. And there are councils around here who are in that class. But for anyone who really wants to question the council going back to 30 or 40 years, to this day, you drive around the town, our streets are curved and gutted. We have some of the most magnificent playing fields around. We have the water with sewage reticulation starting in 1968. The school grounds are all watered now, golf courses are watered. It's unbelievable. Plus, what they've done for the community, for the medical centre. And that's why I say, there's no worries about this council being fit. It is fit. All it needs is the endorsement. And the more we can endorse what the council says, the more chance we may have of the minister changing his opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. And I must say, you along with obviously the whole Shire, but we do thank you particularly for your ongoing support of us all. The second who wishes to speak on the motion? No, Deb? Oh, you will, yes. Debbie Davids.
I'd just like to agree with what Pete's just said, and speak from the heart. We have a council here in front of us who are absolutely awesome. You don't go to many places and they ask you about your council. And so, we've got the best council in Australia. You know, people are surprised at how you speak about your council because the norm would be, oh, they're not doing something, or, you know, they're behind the acorn. But our council are something else. And, you know, I've got such a long association with my father as a councillor. I worked it out with Rick the other day. Between myself and my father, we've had over 70 years of retail business in Tamora. So, there's just no other way to do it. We have to stand firm and stand with our council and go ahead. We can do this. I don't have any hesitation in my heart or my head. I believe that we are in the best position possible, and I totally back our council 100%. So, you go ahead, guys.
Thank you, Deb. One final comment on the motion from another long-serving businessman in the Shire, Cole Richards.
Thank you, Rick. Cole Richards, I've been proud to be in this community for 50 years. I operate, I've worked here for 40 years. And it's a sound, safe town. And I've been so proud to be here, work here. My question, B, powers of B, if they could only just cross the top of the Blue Mountains, come out here, right down our street, our parks and yards, a total credit. The men have moved out, streets clean and tidy, there's field, sporting fields. We've also been hiring aviators, we've got a big museum out there, and we've got a lake. What for people would like? Getting to slip across the mountains and have a good look. Why take this one?
Thank you, Colin, rest assured that when we're treading the corridors of power in Parliament House in Sydney, rest assured they know Tamora Shire's been there. Okay, that's ample discussion, ladies and gentlemen. So, I will therefore put the motion to you, which you're all aware of it, it appears on the screen. And again, thank Peter and Deb for that. So, all those of that opinion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hands if you dare. I declare that motion carried unanimously. Thank you. That's what we've been hoping and praying for, friends, over the last three weeks.
Did you have any doubt?
I didn't have any doubt, but you just never know. Never know. Ladies and gentlemen, now we've got something very special. All of you and others that aren't able to be here have offered your prayers, your love, your support to us all, which has been very, very, very much appreciated. And I can't say that more sincerely than I accept. But what's particularly special is when we have our young people, our students and our youth, asking ways that they can assist and help save the town and the Shire that they love so very, very much. And we've taken one of them up, and Ms Carly Turner, Tamora High School student, a very, very, very talented Tamora High School student, is going to do something very special. And to introduce her, I'm going to call on Mrs Kate Slapp to introduce a very, very special item for you that we believe is going to move to all.
Hello. Young Carly here is a year nine student at Tamora High School and a very, very accomplished young singer who will be performing at the school spectacular in just two weeks. The song she's about to sing. The song she's about to sing is one from our cover eight from 2014, called Tamora True, which I wrote about my passion and the town's passion for this town. And this song is based on the final song from Dirty Dancing, Helman's anthem, but it's called Tamora's Anthem. The lyrics have been changed to express how I feel and how many of us feel about this town.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're not stirred by that, you may have stirred. And that was, that was brilliant, coming from a special people in our community. Well done, Cartwright, and thank you so much, Kate, for that performance. So, ladies and gentlemen, that does conclude the public meeting for this evening. Again, we thank each and every one of you for being here, particularly our friends, councillors, and mayors from other communities. Thank you so much for making the effort. Ladies and gentlemen, please continue your prayers and your support for Tamora Shire. We will now outvote by the end of the year, around mid-December, as far as we are aware. So, we look forward to your continued support. And rest assured, after that unanimous motion, rest assured that we will continue, continue this very, very strong but fair fight to ensure that Tamora Shire is here on into the future. So, thank you and good night.